Good evening, if we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out on this really cold night. And we're hoping that there's no snow on Thursday, but it's not looking today.
It definitely will be.
Yes, it will be.
Don't worry about it, even nothing happens.
So, all right, report of the chairman, we'd like to acknowledge with gratitude a hundred dollars in donation made by Ruth and Robert L. Lesser, which is going to be added to our field trips scholarship fund. We are appreciative of that gift. I have nothing else, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thanks, Jerry. Second by David. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaison. Kevin, you are up.
So tomorrow, Massey will be running on an advisory schedule. We have alumni day coming up, depending on the weather, on Thursday, which is a really fun event. I went last year, and it's cool to see all the kids coming back. And I think I said this last week, all of them are so happy, you know, going to college, and it's kind of nice to hear that from them and saying, oh, the stress, you know, dwindles down a bit, and the freedom of college, they all love it. So I think that that's really important to attend as a student. Robotics team has two tournaments coming up. The first one is this Saturday in Middletown. The second one is next Saturday in Bolton. And many of the teams that are competing have already qualified for regionals, which means that they have a good shot and a possibility at competing at Worlds again. So our robotics team is doing stellar, as always. We have a chorus concert next Thursday at seven. Tonight, the all-state male sports players from last year were being recognized. I know my buddy from volleyball, Alex Barrett, is very excited. It's actually occurring about right now during halftime for the basketball game, so I would say if you could go, but, you know, it's happening right now, so. And then next Tuesday will be the girls' all-state announcement.
Great. Thank you, and you can go, Kevin.
Thank you.
Do anybody else have any committee requests? All right, we will move on to public participation. All right, we will move on. We're moving along. Report of the superintendent, and here's where we stop.
Before we get into the budget discussion, and I do have a slide that I want to look at just to summarize what we've talked about for the last three or four weeks. One thing I want to just talk about is, we had said after the break that we were going to post the assistant superintendent job. So I'd like to do that tomorrow, post that. We'll do like we do with all our postings, we'll internally post it for 10 days, and then go from there. I know that Donna and Alan have agreed to be the board reps. We do have a parent council rep. It's the co-chair of the Parents Council, Tammy Julian. She's the rep. And we still don't have a teacher rep, and we don't have an administrator rep, but they're going to give it to us this week. So we will be able to move forward with that interview process once the 10 days are up. And so that was what I wanted to just share with you. The other thing I wanted to share with you is, at your place is an article that I wrote for the trailer. Brian, the editor, asked if we would like to submit an article or an editorial, once a month, just about topics that make a difference. And so the first one is called, "Is This A Good Call?" I wrote it about snow calls. So it's going to come out on Thursday, which is really apropos.
Pressure's on.
Is it a good call? So it just really talks about the process and what I think about. A lot of questions from parents, especially elementary parents, are, you know, why do we have a two-hour delay? By the time, you know, it's by the time our kids go at nine o'clock, it's really not a problem. But we always think about that 6:45 a.m. new driver from Massey on the road. So I did kind of put that in the article, and you can read it there, and hopefully you'll be able to read it when it comes out on that day. The reception for the new superintendent, for Dr. Jack Zamory, will be on February 20th at seven o'clock, right before the board meeting. So that's a Tuesday, because remember, we have that Monday as Martin Luther King Day. So it's Tuesday, and we'll have, we're going to cancel the finance committee that starts at seven o'clock. We talked to Donna about that today. And then we'll have a reception for Jack on February 20th.
Right.
And we'll get that out in the paper, we'll get it out.
That's February 20th, so that's President's, day after President's Day.
Day after President's Day, it's Tuesday. That's our board meeting anyway, so we'll have it right before the board meeting, they'll be able to, you know, to come and talk with Jack.
Put it down on the list. I never think of parents and stuff.
Put it on our list. Okay, I don't know if you have any questions about those things? All right, what I did is, I kind of put together a slide, just a summary of our budget, so if, I apologize that we have to, but just so that we can have a starting point before we have a discussion. So the first thing that we wanted to share with you is, again, budget history. We know, and I shared this during our budget meetings, these are the last 10 years of budgets, and we know what's happened in the last seven years with those three zeros. And then this year, we're looking at a 1.84 percent increase in dollar amount, that's a million sixteen thousand roughly increase over last year's budget, or $56,281,017. What we showed, and what we talked about, is 80 percent of our budget is salary and benefits, 80.41 percent. And what we wanted, what I wanted to do is just show you, you know, Jack and I sat down today, and we just looked at, what does this budget include under salary and benefits? It included a $400,000 increase in our medical costs, and we hope that that's going to be enough, and we'll know more about that in February. It reinstates two of the three K-5 coordinators. And as I said, we really believe those K-5 coordinators help continuity in the three elementary schools. And so Sheila is going to take the role of the K-5 coordinator for English and Language Arts, that's her background reading. And then we will have the two math coordinator, and the one math coordinator, and the one science coordinator reinstated, so that they can work with the elementary schools. And especially with the new science standards, the next-generation science standards coming into play, and that we have to incorporate that into our curriculum, we really need someone to help organize that and bring that together. We instated three of the technology paraeducators that were cut. The coordinators were cut with the governors cut from the budget. The paraeducators were also cut with the governor's budget. We also included this year, for the first time, a .2 FTE, or roughly $20,000 for a social worker. And that's just a social worker to work part-time with our families that have that need. This budget reduced three and a half certified staff, Jackie Howell, one at Monroe Al, and one and a half at Massey. It reduced 1.5 non-certified staff members, a secretary at central office, and a custodian at the high school. And there is a reduction of $213,000 in negotiation reserve, because we're no longer negotiating those five contracts that we did last year. And remember, in the reserve, we put what we thought would be the increase, so there's money in there for the potential negotiation increase, and then there's money for legal. So we're able to cut $213,000 for that negotiation reserve, because we don't have negotiations for those five contracts. We do have one negotiation at the end of the year, and I'll talk about that a little later, that's for the nurses, and we'll have to put together a group to work on that. In this budget is $55,000 for a new plow truck, part of our capital reserve, our equipment plan. It's time to do a new plow truck. They get a lot of use, as you know, we plow our own schools and in our own driveways, and so it's time to replace that. And then part of that budget, the reason why I came at 1.84, is there is a 10 percent reduction in special ed costs. And if you remember, Kaye, Darlene, and Jen were here last time to talk about what that reduction looked like. So that's my summary, and when we sat down to look at, really, what do we want, to just kind of remind you when we went through those two days of budget workshops, that's the summary. If you have any questions or any other comments.
The staff reduction, all told, are those elimination of headcount, or retirements, or?
Right now, we were able to do all the staff reductions through retirements.
Okay.
So the one and a half at Massey is a retirement in the business department, she only worked half the year, so we're not replacing her. And the other one, looks like it's going to be, there is a retirement in the English department, but because there are certifications in other departments that can teach English, we're going to move some people around, because English has taken a hit the last couple of years, so it looks like it'll be probably a social studies and word language cut.
Okay.
And the same thing with Monroe Al, it's just a class size, a number issue, and Jackie Howell also.
Okay. And the, sorry, and the technology paraeducators, what's their role?
They've been in our three elementary schools assisting with implementing technology within classrooms in the three elementaries.
Okay. So they were pulled out for this year, and now we're adding them back in?
And we're finding that there is a hole in the educational technology part for staffing.
Okay.
John, are those part-timers or full-timers, the technology paraeducators?
They're 30-hour pairs.
Okay.
And that's, for us, that's full-time, 30 hours.
Sorry, and again, the negotiation reserve reduction was due to us just not having contracts needed?
Right. We had five contracts, and so all five contracts had attorney fees, we had to have an attorney to help negotiate. And also, we put in the budget what we projected would be an increase. Because remember, we're budgeting a year and a half ahead, so we didn't know what the negotiations were going to be. So that's why that number is bigger. So that just ends up going back into the salary account.
Okay.
Because we know what it is now.
Okay.
John, I mean, the plow truck, do we know the current edition of the one that's in use now? Is this an addition to?
No, it's not an addition to, it's going to replace one that's old. Do we have the year of that?
It's a 2009 GMC with the Liberty, and it's had hydraulic problems, it was actually in the shop not that long ago. So we, you know, it's a little bit of a duct tape issue currently, so.
One of the issues with the plow trucks is, they spend their entire life out in the salt. And so with this one, one of the things that's occurred with it is, the frame has actually had to be rewelded. It's reaching that point when welding it is problematic because of the amount of metal that's left in the frame.
So we're trying to put it on a cycle, so we don't all have all of our equipment at the same.
Can we just go back one slide, John, to the annual? So 17, 18 was zero, 1.84.
Is the new one.
Right. And that stacks up pretty close to what we've had in recent years.
And again, it was easier in 11, 12, 12, 13, because our enrollment was going down. And as you saw on the slides from the last presentation, our enrollment now is pretty stable. And so now, when we're cutting, you know, it's starting to be a little bit more difficult to do that.
And when was the year when we renegotiated the teacher contracts, and we took, we got them to zeros, like the first?
I think that was, the first one was 12, 13. That was the year where, when we, when they took the zero. And everybody, I think all the bargaining units, even that didn't negotiate, took the zero that year.
We're almost at 8 percent in the same amount of years, right? Starting at 10, 11?
Right, right, yeah. I mean, it's, yeah, the numbers have been, you know.
About a percent a year.
About a percent with the zeros in it. And what we really are happy about this budget is that we're able, with some of the savings, including in special ed and some of the transportation savings, we're able to put things in that we wanted back. You know, we needed, we really believe those K-5 coordinators helped. And we never had a social worker before, and we're using the town social worker, but she doesn't have a lot of time, a lot of time, but she's been very, you know, kind to help some of our needier cases. And so we feel that if we could have that .2, $20,000, we can really help some more of our families that need that support.
And we'll also have firmer numbers as we go along, because our health insurance will, in the end, towards the end of February is when that will be negotiated, and we'll have numbers for that, and we'll have numbers for our stop loss.
Yes.
And also special education busing. So these numbers can change slightly, because we, some of these are placeholders on what we think we're going to have, or based on this year, like stop loss, but that is going to be negotiated out, so those are.
I mean, I have to tell you, we really put a lot of pressure on Brown, and Brown to give us a number. They are not confident in that number. So that's why I think they're going to be aggressive in bidding out the stop loss, because they want to come to that number.
Correct, correct. So we'll have some firmer numbers as we get into late February, for when the Board of Finance has the budget in their hands.
And all this information is online, on our website, all our slides, all our presentations. So, you know, anyone can see that, and we really want to be open and transparent as we can, so people can see where the numbers are.
John, what about the alternative school? Are we still comfortable with the rent we're paying there?
We are.
Or are we looking for another location?
We, Dr. Zamory and I met with the superintendent of, the interim superintendent in Newtown, and we talked about sharing. And as a matter of fact, Kaye talked about, they may want to send someone over to alternative school. If that's the case, that space isn't really big enough if we want to do what they're saying, so we may have to look for another space. But it potentially can make us money. So right now, it seems to fit our needs, if we can take one or two or three from their district. But when it gets much bigger, we're going to have to find a bigger space. And the new law about students that are expelled, where we have to give those students 900 hours, again, we don't have very many expelled students, maybe one or two a year, but to give a student 900 hours, we need to find a space to be able to do that in the most, you know, cost-effective way, instead of sending them out. So we're looking at all those things, I think eventually, that alternative school's going to get to some more.
Anybody have anything else?
No, I just want to say, thank you, see the principals here, and Darlene, Assistant Director of Special Ed, Kaye, the Special Ed Director, and Sheila and Jack. We put a lot of time into this budget, and it is a group team effort. We looked at every rock, we overturned every area. So I want to thank them for the time and energy that all the principals and the directors put in for this. We really feel like we have a solid budget. And if, you know, if there are places that need to be cut, you know exactly where they need to come from, because everything's right out there.
Thank you.
That's John.
Well, we're going right into, do you have anything else, John?
No.
Okay. We will go into presentations, and we will be going over Board of Education, professional development, ways we communicate. Jack, are you going to do it?
I am.
As you know, we do professional development for the Board of Education once a month, and this is our topic for this month.
And communication has been a goal for all our teachers, and it's a goal for our district, and so Jack is going to tell us how, what we've done to help with that goal.
So the first thing I want to share with you is some of the feedback from last year's school climate survey. We'll be talking a little more about this upcoming school climate survey, but this data is really important to us. We really do look at this very closely, and it does determine the kinds of things that we invest our time into. Where are we going to look for growth in the future? So some of the questions that were on here for middle school, high school, were about communication with families. First one, I understand how to access my child's grades, attendance, and assignment information. 97 percent of families agreed with that, so we thought that was a very, very positive sign. School leadership effectively communicates important information and events to families. 91 percent of families agreed on that, which was great. And then, on the elementary level, I am satisfied with teacher-school response I get when I contact my child's school or teacher with questions or concerns. And 80-plus percent of families responded in the positive for that as well. So we have some good feedback, we have some good positive feedback, but we're always looking to improve on what we do. So what we're going to look at in this brief presentation are some of the things that we're doing to enhance the ways that we communicate over time, as well as just share and remind people some of the tools that we have to communicate with students, parents, and community. So what are the tools that we use? This is an overview of the various tools that we use to get the information out to everybody. We use social media, newsletters, we have a great working relationship with local media and The Courier in particular. We have surveys that go out, the school climate survey goes out every year, we have anonymous alerts, parent lecture series with Kaye and her staff, BTO meetings and communications. So there's a lot of tools that we use, because it's a very broad constituency we're looking to reach, community, parents, and our students. So what I wanted to highlight for you tonight are some of the things that we're doing that are new or being revised. So three spots I thought we could look at in detail are School Messenger, our websites, and Saturday Morning Conversations. So School Messenger, the reason why this one's being highlighted tonight is, this is a primary tool for us. Whether it's Joe Cobb's Sunday night phone calls that come out, those go out via School Messenger, or Jack Chicalini's Line's Pride, or messages from the principals, all of those things go out via School Messenger, as well as things like snow day phone calls. Those phone calls occur at my kitchen desk at 4:00 a.m. I select which one of John's morning voices will go out, and within 15 minutes, 4,000 phone calls, texts, emails, all go out. It's really pretty amazing, a little scary at 4:00 in the morning when your vision isn't quite there, and you've still got the, you know, fog left over from a night's sleep, but it works really well, and it's a good, quick way of getting the message out to everybody in the community. So that's a primary tool for us. The other thing I want to highlight in here is just to remind everybody, the board, the community, all of our parents, everybody has complete control over how they receive these announcements. So where you go to change anything is on our website, under Parents and Citizens, there's a link there for School Messenger. And then the other thing we've been working on is to consolidate all of our tools for parents into Power School as a one point of information. And on the bottom of the list here in Power School, you'll see School Messenger, so that's another place you can go to change your settings. But what that allows you to do is, let's say, in the morning, you don't want to receive, you know, you don't want to receive emails, but you'd rather receive texts. You can choose those various text boxes. Now, community announcements, if you don't want to receive them, you don't have to, you can uncheck the boxes. The only thing you can't change is, you have to have a contact for emergency communication, so that if an emergency occurs, we can reach all parents and guardians at any point. But other than that, that requirement, everything else is an option for parents and citizens in terms of the kinds of communications that they want to receive. So it's just important to know that there are directions here on how to make those changes. Yeah, Jerry?
So Jack, I think you just answered a question on a phone call I received earlier.
Yep.
You don't have to be a parent to sign up for School Messenger.
You can get community announcements, you can't get.
Can you get the closings?
No, that you can't, because that goes to parents and guardians.
Gotcha.
Yeah. But, just so you know, all that information, the first place it goes at 4:00 in the morning, as soon as John makes the call, the first place it goes is onto our website.
It's onto the website.
Yeah, so that's available, that's quicker than anything else. We wait for the School Messenger phone calls to go out until 5:30 a.m. So everybody gets a little more sleep. But yeah, 4:00 a.m., roughly 4:15, somewhere in that window, everything's posted on the Our new website is on the way, and I just wanted to highlight how that's going to proceed and give all of you some background on that work. So March, April, we're going to create a draft of the new site. April, May, after that draft is created, we're going to share the link to the new site. It won't be live at that point, we'll have an obscure URL, so that people won't be able to find it, but we'll send it out with a link to a survey, so that we can start to get feedback from everybody about what they like, what they don't like. We'll make changes based on that feedback before we go live. So we'll get the feedback, April, May, make changes, May, June, and then, as we get into the summer months, we'll switch over to the new site, so we've got that feedback incorporated into the new site.
And it's coming here to the board in April, or might be in March?
The.
You're going to share the new site with the board?
Yeah, we could definitely do that. Yep, give everybody an overview of what we have as the new draft gets put together, absolutely. And some of the benefits of the new site, it integrates with School Messenger. So currently, at 4:00 in the morning, first thing I do is, I'll put up the announcement onto the website, then I have to go into School Messenger, and then I have to put together the message in School Messenger. Now, when there's emergencies, we can have one point of entry. So we'll go into School Messenger, it will actually post the announcement onto the website, as well as send out the information via text, phone, email. The other thing that's nice is social media integration. So currently, when we post things on Twitter or Facebook, we have to log into those various social medias. Now, we can choose to post things on the website, and then have them go out via Twitter and Facebook at the same time, so that would be an efficiency for us. The other thing we were able to do is, we were able to get into a consortium bid, we were also able to lower the cost of our website moving forward, which we're excited about. And then the last thing, which is really an important one for us, is if you watch parents these days, everybody's on their phone. It's not, it's not using a PC. So having an interface that works really well on portable devices is essential in 2017. So this is an example of one of the new vendor sites, and as you can see, the way it's constructed is, it orients itself really well onto various devices. So when you get onto a phone, if you look at our current site, it says, "Go to full site," you can't see all the menus. This one is much more phone-friendly, so that it compacts it into, what are the essential links? Okay, right off the bat, staff need info, students need info, and parents need info. And then, once you click whoever you are, you get to the info you need. So the flow of information is much better for portable devices, and I think in the end, that will make life better for everybody. Yep.
Jack, what's your target, ideal target goal line for the site? Because August is close to the start of the year.
Right, really, I put that out there just to be safe. Our target is July 1.
Okay.
And I think we'll make that, but just in case it put August.
Okay.
If it does end up being August, the, I'm looking at the drop dead as early August, like August 1.
Okay.
Our Saturday Morning Conversations, which we've had with Ken and Steve, they've been small, but they've led to, I think, some good conversations, and there has been benefit to having, we've probably had, max, maybe four to six people, it hasn't been a lot of folks showing up, but there's some good ideas that have come out of those conversations. People have brought up questions about paper use or other ideas, and they've led to other actions that have been made. And also, having time speaking with the first selectman about what's going on in our schools, and the integration of schools with the town, and the interrelation between the two, there's been benefit in that. But I think one of the things that we do have to consider is what it looks like going forward, whether it's the same amount of time, and it's something we'll need to reassess over time. But there has been benefit to it, even though the turnout has been relatively small. And then, just a couple other quick highlights for you in terms of ongoing feedback that anyone can provide to us at any point. On our website, under Links, the first one that's there is a feedback link. So if you have a question about something, or if you want to provide the district with feedback about anything, you click on that, a real simple form opens up, you submit that form, and that is received 24/7. We do get them every once in a while, some questions or some ideas about things, and they're helpful. So we would encourage everybody to take advantage of that, if they have a question about something, or, you know, if they've got feedback for the budget process, that's an easy way to be able to submit that information to us. And then, lastly, we're working very hard on making some updates to our school climate surveys, and that'll be covered in a separate presentation, but that is another really important piece of information. As noted in the first slide tonight, we do look at where our strengths and weaknesses are with the climate surveys, and that does drive changes that we make. As John noted, communication is a priority for us. That came out of these surveys. So we would encourage everybody, when you see the links come through for this year's surveys, to please take advantage of that, so we have everybody's feedback to help contribute to future decisions that are made.
And the anonymous alert has been, I know Jack talked about it, but that's been another tool, especially for the middle school and high school. I think the elementary, I haven't used it as much, but middle school and high school, it's been a tool, and I know that this year, they find it much more positive than last year. Last year, there was, the kids were kind of getting used to it and putting, you know, prank kind of things on it. But this year, I think, you know, Joe has mentioned. But this year, I think, you know, Joe has mentioned in the past that he's gotten some really good feedback from parents and we're going to be able to move forward and do some work with that. So, another, another way for communication. Thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, we will move on to new business and first up is to a motion to approve the two thousand eighteen nineteen Board of Education budget as presented at the one. Oh, sorry, yes. I think we're all set.
We're all set with that, I just didn't know if you were.
I think we're all set with the liaison positions, right?
Is there, the CES one, is that one filled?
CES is, uh, John, talk to them, that is the meeting date, the first Thursday at four o'clock.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock, and so.
I told him it was a problem for us, um, that we might not be able to send a rep.
They seem fine, unless anybody wants to do that at first Thursday at three o'clock? Nope, it's kind of a bad time between people working and people with kids hanging off buses.
The time was the problem for us at three o'clock, for people who have children who, you know, need to be back by then and for people who work, it's too early, so.
Right, so we're just going to.
And he said if we don't have anyone, he'll send the minutes to Donna and Donna can look at them and decide what, what she wants to be going for.
Yep, so we're just gonna move along with that. Um, and I think everything else, we had everybody covered, so we're good with that, sorry. Totally didn't, forgot about that. Alright, so do I have the motion to approve the two thousand eighteen nineteen Board of Education budget as presented at the one point eight four? Thank you, David. Second? Thank you, Alan, discussion on that. Alright, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. We will move on to item B, which is the climate survey. Jackie, using the thing again?
We talked about a different way to set this up. We talked about a different way to set this up so that maybe we'll be able to put some monitors in the middle so board members can see the monitors and, um, we'll be able to have that for people out there.
So, a little bit about our school climate surveys, this is just a quick overview of how this looks going into the coming year versus previous years. One of the things we're doing this year is we're gonna send out the surveys in January, we're gonna send them out later this month. And the reason for doing that is we wanna get some additional feedback on some other topics earlier rather than later in the school year. So, this will allow us to do that. And it, um, the other thing that we've looked very hard at is, we've tried to keep the, the nature of the questions consistent over time so that we can make a comparison in our growth. So that's been an important piece. The format for that reason has remained this, the same over time and the survey recipients, same thing, it's gonna go to our families, uh, to our students as well as to our staff. So that we're really able to get a good measurement of how things are changing and growing. Some, uh, new questions we've added this year, we've added some questions about homework, this came out of our curriculum council work that's been going on to have a better understanding of, uh, perceptions around homework from students, staff and parents. And then also we have some questions about technology and in particular, uh, again, some questions about BYOT and some questions about one-to-one. Uh, so we can get some additional feedback from, uh, parents and students about how technology's working within our schools. So who is surveyed at the elementary level, the students are in grades three and five. At the middle school, it's all students and at the high school, it's all students. For parents, it's one survey for each student, yeah, whatever level they're in, and it's all students K through twelve. I'm sorry, all teachers K through twelve, thank you for. So all staff, district-wide, thank you. So what is on the survey, questions about school climate, we have questions about safety, bullying, communication, homework, technology and after-school activities. So we really made it, uh, a comprehensive means for getting feedback from everyone. How's the survey given? Last year we made a transition to Google Forms, it's a free format. We send out a link to everybody to have them, uh, provide that feedback through this digital survey. Nice thing about, uh, using Google Forms is it's real-time feedback, so we can see the, uh, the spreadsheet being populated as people are entering it. We'll, uh, share the, uh, feedback with the board as we have in the past, uh, given the earlier date of this survey, uh, probably February, March, we'll be able to get that back to the board. And also goes out to all the schools and that contributes to our, uh, our school planning in terms of, uh, what kinds of initiatives we address each year. And as noted before, it's for measuring our growth over time and developing improvement strategies both at the school level and district levels. Our format this year, we've added, uh, some additional graphics to it, so if you have children in multiple schools, you won't forget which survey you're in. Uh, you'll have a clear identifier in terms of which school you're completing the survey for. And as noted, uh, we'll have that feedback back to, uh, the board in February, March. And we're looking forward to the feedback this year, given that we've added some new areas, we're hoping it'll give us, uh, some additional information to, uh, drive future decisions for the district.
If anybody wants, wants to see a copy of the survey, um, we could certainly send it to you. We have some paper copies here too, but we didn't wanna make copies of it, it's a pretty big packet. But if anybody wants to see any of the surveys, again, a lot of it is from the same from last year so we can compare year to year on communication. The homework i- is an interesting topic, we had some parents who were very involved, interested in talking more about homework as well as staff members. If you remember in the beginning of the year, we did those, um, mini workshops and one of the groups was on homework. And, staff was very interested in looking at homework policies, so eventually after the work in the curriculum council, they'll come back to the policy committee to talk about a policy on homework.
How many, how many questions?
Hmm, varies, depending on which one it is, the, I would guess, Joe, do you remember, I would guess about twenty, the largest one?
Are total questions?
Yeah, total questions.
You think?
Forty, you think, okay.
What do you have, like a rating scale, like, uh, satisfied versus not satisfied or?
Depends on the question, uh, most of them are that kind of hierarchy, very satisfied, somewhat.
Yeah.
Yeah, the elementary ones have quite a bit on there, which is a unique identifier, we're talking about that today. But, yeah, it's generally a hierarchy of how pleased people are with, uh, an indicator.
So it's just a looker scale?
Uh, by and large, yeah, the vast majority.
If you remember, a few years ago, we went with a company who helped us develop some of our questions. Unfortunately, it was very inexpensive the first couple of years and then the third year, the cost per, per pupil and per parent just was astronomical. So, we kept the questions, but we're doing it through, uh, which was cost-effective way, great, um, with Google, so.
Anybody have anything else on that? Alright, we will move on to item C, which is the discussion of our Board of Education self-evaluation. Uh, for our new, uh, board members, every year the Board of, the Board gets together and basically evaluates ourselves on different criteria and how we feel that as a board, um, we're working together, um, and how we think, um, we're doing. And then what areas of, um, what areas based on these criteria do we feel that we need to improve, um, on? So, everybody should have on their place, the evaluation and what the questions are. Now, I remember last year that we had a full discussion on one of the questions because of the way it was worded. We all kind of, um, evaluated ourselves poorly because of the way the question was worded. Does anybody remember what question that was?
What that was?
Because it was one where, because of the way it was worded, we were just, we said, oh, we wanna change the wording of that one because it was one.
Was it about communication?
I don't remember.
I remember our discussion, but not which one it was, let me.
Right, we had a full discussion that says the problem where we, everybody voted, everybody evaluated ourselves so poorly on that one is because of the way it was actually worded.
I can go back and look at the results from last year.
Yes, could you?
And then I'll put it in Friday letter so you can see that.
The research one, 'cause that's very ambiguous. Board makes decisions based on analysis of rela- relevant research and data.
I don't remember, is John, if you can look.
I will do that, and then I'll put it in the Friday letter what that one is. And I also, um, thought that maybe we could add something about future professional development, what are the things that you want us to bring for professional development? And it's, we used a, a Google Doc last year and you just have to pick a date. The reason why I brought up today is 'cause last year at this board meeting, this is when you talked about it, so.
Well, let's figure out what that question is and then we'll reword that and then we'll add the one on professional development. And then we'll have to send this out to everybody, um, to complete, get it back, tally, tally the results and then we'll have to meet.
But you had a, a whole meeting to discuss you.
Correct, correct, um, so I would say this is like March, does that sound reasonable to everybody?
Yeah.
To do this in March, and I think we did it on a separate meeting, didn't we?
I thought so too.
You did, it was a separate meeting, but it might have been before a meeting.
I don't think it was before a meeting, 'cause we were at Central Office.
No.
How long? How long do we expect?
Probably about an hour. It wasn't that, it wasn't that long.
It sounded off.
What?
I think it was like on an off meeting day or something.
I think it was on an off Monday. Monday, March twelfth, does that sound good to everybody? Uh, open to what time, does any, everybody wanna do later, earlier?
Unless you wanted to do, uh, the night of a meeting, but condense the, the board agenda for that night and then we can meet right afterwards.
We can do that, we can certainly do that too.
Maybe go from seven thirty to eight and then eight to nine or, or one.
Yep, certainly, so do we wanna do that the nineteenth then, 'cause that would be our board meeting?
Sure, works for me.
Yep, okay, so we'll do that.
March nineteenth, so the board meeting will be seven thirty to eight thirty.
Yep, it'll be condensed.
And then.
Yep.
Eight thirty to whatever, nine thirty, we'll be, uh, on board.
No, eight to nine.
The board meeting will be seven thirty to eight.
Eight, and then.
Seven thirty to eight.
Yeah, just try to condense the agenda.
Right.
Okay. You can do that.
Okay, so we should have this out by the end of the week, um, to everybody.
Well, um, alright, and then I, so, and you'll just give me leave to change the question so it's more understandable?
Yes, yeah, so hopefully we'll have it up, I mean, well, okay, yeah, if there's a snowstorm, we'll say next Monday it'll go out, just in case. And actually, that takes care of D, schedule the date for the Board of Education's self-evaluation. Now, while we're talking about this date, Jackie, you should, we should try to come up with a date, um, for setting our goals and action plans.
We had that on the next agenda on this, the next board meeting, we, we have it on the agenda to talk about that.
Alright, 'cause that will need to do in the spring.
Yeah, we just had a conversation about that today, we thought we'd, uh, start it similar to what we did last year. Have an initial conversation within the admin council and preparing some of the materials for the board.
Okay.
And then bring it forth to the Board of Education.
Okay.
And then next time we'll pick a date, it'll be, usually we do it here, we have dinner and we.
Right.
It's an off, that's definitely an off.
That's definitely an off because that's gonna be a couple of hours.
With all the administrative.
And I would say we'll, we'd probably wanna shoot for a May because I think that June's gonna be way too busy.
Yeah, we only have one meeting in June as well.
Correct, we have one meeting in June and then, but this will be an off meeting, but between graduations and all that type of stuff.
End of year activity, yeah.
Right, right, and all that, we should shoot for early May.
Right.
For that, so let's, so, okay, so that'll be on the agenda next month.
Next time, yep.
And then we can pick a date for that, but kinda start looking at that now. Perfect, anybody have anything else?
I appreciate my own microphone, so.
It's a little bit.
That's right.
Well, yeah, because John doesn't even have a mic, I don't even notice that. They all shifted off.
They were hinting.
No talking for John.
You don't need it, you don't need it.
Alright, um, do I have a motion to adjourn then, thank you, Jerry and David? All in favor? Great, thank you, motion passed.